I'd like to call the meeting to order. If we could have a moment of silence, please. Please rise for the flag suit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, The Herald News, The Trends, The Record, Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the county superintendent's office, the board attorney, and Cablevision of Warwick, and posted on the district's website. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, town hall, township library, and all district schools. Mrs. Francisco, roll call.
This is Romeo. Here. Mr. Seidowitz.
Here.
Mr. Drew. Mrs. Dwyer. Mr. Greenough. Mrs. Fritz.
Here.
Mr. Ofchinsky.
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Dr. Anamo, your report.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our February meeting, our workshop meeting. We have, to start off, we have some nice student award winners here today. We have representatives from the local VFW who are going to help us out. We have, I know I see some of our children in the audience who won the awards. So we have a nice certificate to give you on behalf of the Board of Education. And we also have some nice flags from the local VFW. I think we're going to ask you to read your essay if you brought it. That would be terrific. So without further ado, VFW.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I'm Pat, excuse me, I'm Pat Lockman. I'm with the VFW here in town. And thank you, Board of Education members, for giving us time to give out our awards. We've actually increased our program, our awards program. We now have two. We've included the Grammar School this year. The Grammar School is called the Patriots' Pen. And the high school is called the Voice of Democracy. And just for those of you who do not understand what is involved in that, I just got this little very quick explanation. It's for the Patriots' Pen, it's, each year more than 125,000 students in grades six to eight enter the Patriots' Pen essay contest. The first place winner, and each state competes in national awards totaling $50,000, with each first place state winner receiving a minimum of $500 at the national level. The national first place winner wins $5,000 and an all expense paid trip to Washington, DC.
Wow.
Okay, so that's the Grammar School. Excuse me, winner curse. Okay, the next one is what we've been doing for a while, which is the Voice of Democracy. And that is, the Veterans of Foreign Wars is proud to present the Voice of Democracy Scholarship Program. The scholarship is open to students in grades nine through 12 who are enrolled in a public, private, or parochial high school or/or home study program. That's relatively new. Voice of Democracy Audio Essays, audio reporting, program provides high school students with a unique opportunity to express themselves in regards to a democratic and patriotic-themed recorded essay. The winner will receive an all expense paid trip to Washington, DC, tour the city in its auxiliary, and receive their portion of $154,000 in national awards. The top scholarship being $30,000. The VFW established the Voice of Democracy Program in 1947 to provide the opportunity for the students to express themselves in regards to democratic ideals and principles. Veterans are respected for their service, always receive their earned entitlements, and are recognized for their sacrifice and vision to the VFW and these reports. Okay, any questions at all that anybody wants to know about? Okay. So far, West Milford Post alone, we have contributed over $800 to this program with our winners. I'm not going to read off the winner. Oh, and I should make a point of recognizing Karen Johnson, who is here. Thank you, Karen. She was our liaison for the high school in picking out these winners and helping us with this program. She's also very new to us. I hope she can tolerate us and stays with us. Okay, I'd like to read off the winners of the Patriots' Pen first. And our first place winner is, and if I slaughter your name, people, I'm really sorry. I apologize now, is Lily Rodak.
The winner from the Board of Education, Ries Township of West Milford Board of Education. Lily Rodak has attained recognition for 2018-2019 VFW Patriots' Pen Essay Contest, first place, and is hereby awarded the Certificate of Honor. This is from the Board of Education. From the--
No, we're not done yet. Let me put this down, I guess, in a full court.
Veteran of Foreign Wars of the United States in its auxiliary, Youth Essay Certificate of Merit, presented to Lily E. Rodak, first place, in recognition of excellence in the Patriots' Pen Youth Essay Competition, you have been designated an outstanding young spokesperson of the future.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our second place winner is, wait, the second place winner is Jillian? Jillian?
Jillian.
Jillian. Okay. And her dad is also here, a member of our Post, and maybe he would like to give the award to his daughter. There you go, read. No, you don't have to read.
Same thing that hers said.
You can explain the pen and the metalwork, and how much she gets. Okay? What's the number? Is her dad?
Well, she's technically male, so there's no felony.
And our third place winner is Jordan Mann. Okay, now we'd like to call Lily back and have her read her essay that won.
Why honor the American flag? The American flag is an important part of our history. Betsy Ross was the woman who hand-sewed the first American flag. The 50 stars on the flag represent the 50 states, and the 13 stripes represent the first 13 colonies. I honor the American flag. It is a very valuable piece of our history. These are the reasons why. I honor the American flag for our first responders. All the police officers and firemen that risked their lives to save ours are astonishing human beings. They respond to any type of trouble, big or small. They come in an instant, no matter how far or how close you are from them. They keep us safe, and I respect that deeply. I honor the flag for the men and women who leave their families and homes to fight for our freedom. There are more than 1.2 million Americans who died fighting in war. That's a lot of people. Not only was that their choice, but they knew that dying was a possible fate. When I listen to the National Anthem, I put my hand on my heart and think of all the people who fought and are still fighting in war. I give my prayers and thoughts to them and their families, waiting for them at home. I honor the flag for the diversity of our country. Everyone is different in their own special ways. There are more religions than I can even count. We should treat everyone equally. The American flag stands for the unity of our country and is a symbol for what we fight for. We fight for our people and our amazing country. Even when times are hard, we do not give up. We keep persevering through. The American flag is an important symbol of our freedom and our country. We should honor all the people that died fighting for our freedom and those who still are. The American flag stands for the diversity of our country. We are all different. The flag will always be in our hearts and minds and help us think back to that day 242 years ago, when a strong woman sewed the flag we call ours.
Okay, now I would like to read the Voice of Democracy. You're my tongue, young man. It's okay, I don't really need it, but I did. Read our Voice of Democracy winners. Our first place winner is Kalen Rose Ozanik.
She's the first place winner?
Okay. Our second place winner is Jordan Spencer. The Board of Education issues to Jordan Spencer, Certificate of Honor, for 2018-19, Voice of Democracy. You're second place. Our third place winner is Marie Parkin. Yeah, this is Marie Parkin.
Yes.
Same as first said, Certificate of Honor. There's your certificate.
Thank you.
And you've got a ribbon. And a patch.
Thank you.
And a pen. A check. Official--
Oh, wow. Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, our last, we now have, we actually had two first place winners because we have a homeschool student, which is new to us. And he is here tonight, Connor--
Copko.
Copko. Thank you. Connor Copko. He won first place also for us, but he also won second place in the division. And we would like you to read your essay too, please.
Why does my vote even matter? What use is it? After all, it is only one vote. What difference will it make? These are the questions that plague so many in society today and continue to impact young and old alike, especially those of my generation, ultimately hurting voter turnout. The best way to counter this drop-off in voting is not by simply saying that voting is a right that we are blessed to have and one we should exercise. While this statement is absolutely true, it does not address the looming question that pervades America. Does my vote really matter? The answer is yes. My vote matters throughout the local and national political arenas, is a power that we are to use, protect, and pass on to future generations. Local elections are some of the most ignored elections in the country, when, in fact, they are some of the most crucial votes for all citizens. Most issues on the agenda, which will directly impact everyday people, are those that are decided at the local level. Sadly, voter turnouts for local elections, especially in the largest cities such as New York, Los Angeles, and Philadelphia, continue to decline. Recently, only 20% to 30% of voter-aged people came out on Election Day. Unsurprisingly, the voter turnout with the lowest percentage was the 18-24 age range. Many have simply not realized the importance of these elections. For example, we vote for the school board, which decides what happens in our schools in addition to the taxes that our parents pay, which I will eventually pay as well. These votes impact classes, sports, and nearly 60% of our local taxes. Votes directly decide these crucial matters, and results are easily seen. We play an important role in deciding the laws of our country, and an even bigger part in the local laws of our states and towns. After seeing the impact my vote can have on the local election, I am more apt to consider the value of my own vote in a national election. I can see why it matters in local elections, but does it matter in presidential elections? After all, there are millions of people voting. However, take some of the closest races in history, such as the 2000 election between Al Gore and George W. Bush. In this election, the Florida race was only decided by a mere 537 votes after recount. The difference that those people made is astounding. If they had decided that their vote did not matter and instead stayed home that day, imagine what the election would have been like. In 2000, there were little over 1,300,000 voters aged 18 to 24, yet only 41% of those voters cast their ballot. Florida in 2000 was worth 25 electoral votes. Only 1% more of those voters would have meant over 13,000 more people potentially slaying that vote one way or another. The impact of just a small percentage makes a substantial difference. Single votes can change history, and history could have been changed, not by famous politicians or electors, but by everyday voters like you and like me. Voters may just be one part of a whole, but that whole can make a difference. Especially in my age range, few acknowledge that politics affect youth, while those that do often only complain about it instead of taking the action to vote. Banded together as voters will make our voices heard about issues that matter, not just a single voice, but a whole cacophony of them. If we do not exercise this right, we are giving away our power that the Constitution has granted us, and fewer and fewer the population will be represented, moving the country farther from a democracy. According to the Federalist Papers, some of the founding documents of our nation, it is the voter's job to elect politicians that are honest, with good morals, so each and every citizen can have representation. In addition, it is not only for us that these votes matter. In fact, what we vote for today will impact the generations that come after. It matters. Wasting my vote is essentially making a statement that I do not care for those who come after me. How else can I say it? My vote, your vote, our vote matters. In state and elections, state and local elections, it matters. In presidential and congressional elections, my vote matters. It matters because of the impact it will make in the future generations, the impact it can make now, and the historical impact that voters have made on us. It is the right that we have and are free to exercise. It's because of freedom that my vote matters. The Tomb of the Unknown Soldier says, "Freedom is a light for which many have died in darkness." We have not had to die in darkness. We have been granted that freeing light. I will use that and the freedoms I have been granted. This is why my vote matters.
Impressive.
Very good.
Excuse, sorry, I said winner curse again. It's amazing what our students can really do when they put their minds to it. And as a VFW representative, I'm glad that we can spur them along with a little money and a new Porsche. But, oh, I didn't say that. And thank you again for allowing us to come here and your time. I appreciate it. Thank you. And thank you to the parents and everybody.
Thank you again. Thank you again, and congratulations to our winners. We are now going to move into our harassment, intimidation, and bullying investigations, trainings, and protocols report. So now, if you wanted to sneak out here and get ready to go to bed for school tomorrow, it'd be a perfect time. We won't hold it against you. So to the board and to the members of the public, we have to do two reporting periods for something called HIBITP every year. Our first reporting period is September through December, and our second one is January to June. So at actual school, we had, for September to December, zero HIV investigations. At Maple Road, we had zero HIV investigations. At Marshall Hill, we had one investigation. It was unsubstantiated. At Paradise Mill, we had zero investigations. At Elmer Greenwood Lake, we had three investigations, zero were affirmed as HIV. At Westbrook, we had zero investigations. At McAfin, we had one investigation and zero were affirmed as HIV. And at the high school, we had eight investigations, two were HIV-positive. I'm coming out with my winter.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Oh, okay. Are you gonna, you're in climate weather, we're skipping that.
No, we'll get right there.
Can we skip it?
No, it's just a second. Brief update. We were having some issues with our Honeywell reporting system, that the Honeywell messages were going out, the phone calls and emails were going out on time, but the text messages were not. So we believe we've rectified that, and actually tomorrow's going to be a dismissal, so we think it all got fixed today. So I think we're okay.
Good. Thank you. Mrs. Francisco, we have four minutes.
I'd like to start with the audit.
Oh, that's right, the audit. I'm sorry, yes.
We are here from the auditor room, and we are going to--
Oh, there they are.
--audit board with the results of the June 30th, 2018 audit. Just to let you know, we posted everything online, but we don't have a down copy. It should happen by the end of this week, and we'll go out just before.
Thank you, Barbara. So this year's audit was pushed off a little bit because of the state of New Jersey. There was a new governmental accounting standard board, number 75, and the state had to give us information on that. The audits are usually due December 5th. The state of New Jersey didn't even give us that information until around late January. So the audits got pushed off. After that, there was a required supplementary informational page that was supposed to go in. It wasn't included in the first things, first packet they gave us, so they had to update it again. So that pushed it off another two weeks. So here we are. It didn't really change much. As I talk about every year, I talk about the CAFRA report. You have the CAFRA report, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which has all the financial statements in it. Then we have the AMR, the Audit Management Report, which basically gives you the commentary recommendations and some information on what impacts a little bit. The CAFRA has three different types of fund balances in it. One is under the budgetary basis, one is under like a GAAS, generally something, government auditing standard, and the other one is full GAAP. And that's the reason why we had to wait for this governmental accounting standard board information, is because it changes GAAP. Now, Exhibit C1 in the audit report is under the budgetary basis, and that's what we use when we make decisions about budgetary, how much we're going to put in fund balance, and make decisions on your financial statements. All the other fund balances and all the other statements are skewed by accruals, accounts payable, bonds payable, the accrued numbers for sick and crude vacations and things of that nature. So what I want to do tonight is, and I listen every time we do give these speeches, I usually go to Exhibit C1, which you don't have yet, but what I do is I have a quick synopsis of Exhibit C1 from last year to this year, because the Exhibit C1 that we normally give you is only one year. So what I did is I sort of compressed it and gave you two years of information and the differences between the two. I also gave you a schedule back here of, which I'll give you a handout in a second, of the debt service. And I'll be really brief, because I could talk about this for months, days, hours. Okay, so on the first page, we have the recapitulation, which is from last year's audit report as of June 30th, 2017. The second column is this year's C1 schedule, and the right side is the variance. As I mentioned every year, your fund balance is made up of different components, so that's the first part. So the first restricted fund balances are your capital reserve, maintenance reserve, any excess surplus from the current year, any excess surplus that we have from previous years designated for subsequent year. Assigned fund balances are your encumbrances, which are basically your purchase orders as of June 30th that we know we're going to pay as of July, August. And then we have your unassigned fund balance, which is your 2% number, which is the calculation that you'll see in the Audit Management Report. That's the maximum amount the state allows us to keep in fund balance. Anything above that is what is considered excess surplus. The excess surplus then has to go to, at a minimum, towards your fund balance anticipated to offset taxes. And for the most part, the school boards, the first year it always hurt, for the most part, school boards kind of use that and they kind of use, they normally use about the same amount, and it usually doesn't vary. If we do have a lot of excess surplus, it's the board's decision to pay, to put it into your capital reserve, or into your maintenance reserve, or some districts have tuition reserves, to keep that number steady. If the school district knows they're going to do some capital planning, it might want to keep it higher and offset it with expenditures, so that there's not a huge fluctuation in the amount of excess surplus. So the first line, you have the capital reserve. Last year to this year, there was a $503,000 increase. The maintenance reserve went down $100,000. Excess surplus went up $451,000. And the number in the 2018 column, the excess surplus, is going towards year 1920, because we're missing a year. So as of 18, we're already in the new year, so it goes off to the next year. In the second column, the excess surplus designated for subsequent year expenditure is what we're actually using in the 18-19 budget at a minimum. You can always use some of your undesignated monies, if you so desire, to help for expenditures. So moving on, on the bottom then, I show your revenues, your expenditures, your excess or deficit, any other financing transfers in and out, and your excess deficit from other financing sources and uses. Local sources, the first line is your tax levy, tuition, this line is revenues. State sources, excluding the BEHALF numbers, which is your TPAF and your FICA, numbers that skew it, and also I back out the same number on your expenditures. So you can see that local sources, there was a small decrease of $70,000. State sources, you actually had a plus of $237,000. Federal sources, which is your Medicaid reimbursements, a plus of $34,000. On the expenditure side is your general fund, which is the bulk of your monies in the budget. That went up $850,000. Capital expenditures, which are for your capital outlay for small items, that went down $306, and the charter school, there was one in 17, but not one in 18. So you see that our excess or deficit actually was down a little bit in 18, $312,000. So you see that our excess or deficit actually was down a little bit in 18, $312,000. Other financing sources for 17, we had a large dollar amount transferred from the general fund to capital projects for a capital project. I think that was like $1.2 million something. So that's why there's a huge difference between 17 and 18. And then on the bottom, it shows you what your fund balance was in total. Again, on the left-hand side, we started the year with $9.6 million, we ended the year with $8.8. And then in the 2018 column, we started again with that same number, that $8.8, and we ended with $8.9. So I know that was a lot. All this was taken from Exhibit C1 in the audit report, so when you get it, you look at it and you can see what the detail is. The second page is from the CAFRA report, Exhibit I-1, and it shows as of June 30th, you had $6.6888,000 in bonds payable. The first one is the school bonds of 2016. They mature July 15th of 2029. They're 12 years. The first principal payment was extended, and I'll tell you what that means in a minute. So basically, there were no principal payments between 17 and 18, because when the other bond, the 2003 bonds dropped off, which you could see, they ended the year with $388,000 in 17, and they're gone. So now you have $388,000 to put towards the principal payment of the $6.5 million, which I think was around $400-something thousand. So it was worked out that way, so that when these dropped off, it kicked the other ones back in. So you can see that we ended the year as of June 30th with $6.5 million bonds payable, and again, I think they're 12-year bonds. That was quick, I know. Like I said, I can go over these numbers for three hours. Like I said, anything else in that audit report is either special revenues, the special revenue fund, which is your IDEA or your titles, and that money basically comes in. We have to spend that money exactly where the state tells us to, so there is no free balance. We spend it as it comes in and goes. The debt service fund is just to pay off these bonds. There's trust and agency monies for your payroll, student activities, athletic account, and basically it's in trust for those students or payroll. The only other thing that you can control is the cafeteria account. And every year, you take a look and you can see where you are with the cafeteria. Right now, we have no retained earnings or no fund balance in the cafeteria, because we're running in a slight deficit, where the general fund picks up the difference, so that we just take out of the general fund exactly what we need to break even. And as I mentioned every year, the cafeteria should run like a deli. It should pay for itself. We're getting there. 2017 was a lot larger than what we had used in 2018. So we're getting to a point where hopefully we're going to do, we'll break even and then eventually hopefully turn a profit on it. That's all I have for financial statement information. Ryan Clary over here is going to go over the Management Report, the two comments that were in there. So, Ryan?
So every year, we assemble a team, we come in, put together a plan, we visit Barbara, we just check up on the, you know, the financial processes within the school. Just want to make sure everything's running according to plan. We had two comments that we include in the audit report. First was that there were multiple instances where the ed check worksheets, this is school food service, the ed check worksheets didn't agree with what was reported to the state as far as meals served. What happens then is you either have an underclaimer or overclaim, and it affects the amount reimbursed to the district or the school nutrition program. The second comment that we had related to the transportation of students to non-public schools. Within the, I believe within the transportation department, they're supposed to collect VAT forms, which are stamped to certify that the child attended the non-public school that they're supposed to attend. And these files are not available for us for a year. So our two recommendations are that the ed check worksheets should agree to what's reported to the state on a monthly basis, and that the VATs be collected for non-public schools transported, non-public children.
Can you just clarify, wasn't it just one school that, because we did the transportation?
The one non-public school, I believe.
It was just that one school that we didn't have.
Yeah. But there might, was there multiple kids that went there?
Yeah, because we transported. It was cheaper for us to transport than have them go.
Okay.
So we had the one bus that went there, but there were the only ones that didn't have the VAT, everyone else did.
Okay.
So most of the, 90%, 99% of the time, the comments or recommendations for any school district is either ASSA-related, student activity-related, or cafeteria-related. Basically, what the process is, is that when the student is either classified as free, reduced, or paid, or their income is, they go through the line and we have to keep track of it, and then we get reimbursed by the state depending on if it's free, reduced, or paid lunch. So it's a lot of work. So while we're in the process and we do find these problems, we bring it to Barbara's attention and we try and fix it before we even start the school year that we're in, so that you don't have a repeat finding. So, and it was only $9.80 or something like that. But that was in their sample, so we only picked a small sample. But again, it wasn't, actually, we underclaimed, so they owe us $9, which I'd rather be on that side than the other side.
I don't know if anyone has questions, I just want to say I've sat through this many times in the past, and to have two items is amazing. So I want to say thank you to Barbara and to Billy Schultz. They did a great job, good job on everybody in the board office for the hard work, and I'm sure they're going to work hard on the correction action plans, but I think I can remember times where we've had more, especially under the food service category. So I don't know, does anyone have any questions?
Of course.
Of course.
Thank you for looking.
I was right on you, Mr. Drew, go ahead.
Well, I think that's actually remarkable, having only two auditors. What do you typically find the number of items in the district that you are?
Well, it depends. It's two, three, four, maybe zero, sometimes two.
Really?
Yeah, because the way we kind of, like I said, the way we work is, before we even leave the school district, we don't just leave them in a lurch. Being that we do so many school districts, we try and use what we have from other districts and try and implement anything we can so that they don't occur again. And like I said, before we leave, we try and fix the problem before it even starts. So if we're there in July or August, we can do it before the school year even starts.
Well, to me, that seems remarkable, to have only.
Well, I mean, as they mentioned, I mean, the staff is, Barbara and her staff are really great to work for, and they pretty much make our job pretty easy.
Now, looking at this quickly, we added half a million to capital reserve. So that was something we voted on, and we said we're going to add a half a million to capital reserve, right? And then we had an excess surplus of $2.5 million. So we actually collected, I guess, 300, or I'm sorry, 3 million more than we really needed. What was the, not that you don't want to have some surplus, but, you know, we had quite a substantial cushion. What was the tax increase in this year?
For which year, 17, 18?
No, this one.
Well, they're both, 17, 18 is there, and 18, 19.
The 2018.
The 17, 18 budget, I think it was 0%.
Zero. Yeah, I think it was. I just wanted to make sure that I remembered correctly.
It wound up in a little bit more household, but the.
So we generated 3 million more than we actually needed to meet our actual.
Is that the 2% in there?
We had a lot, we had some unfilled additions too, I think that helped us with this number.
Well, there are a lot of reasons for that, but.
There's a lot of reasons.
We spent half a million on capital outlays. Do you remember what that was?
Up for 17, 18?
Yeah. I mean, would that have been buses? I don't think we had any big items. And I'm sorry, I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, but.
There was a lot of categories. One of the bigger ones was non-instructional equipment, $84,000. Instructional equipment, $47,000. Student transportation, $34,000.
So that might have been a bus?
$34,000 is usually like an issue there or something, a piece of equipment.
Buses, there was about $80,000.
Okay.
And construction was the biggest, $185,000.
Was there a transfer at the end of last school year for the Maple Road roof?
We transferred.
It's not in this year.
That's not this one, no.
This year, I thought that was an additional.
Sounds like we actually had a pretty good year.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions?
A comment, having been an auditor and a financier, I think about 40 years to have a budget or numbers this size and only be off by like $7.38 is commendable, remarkable.
Remarkable, yeah.
Good job, Barbara. Anyone else have any questions? I guess not.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night. All right. Moving on to our minutes.
The minutes will be available at next week's meeting for consideration.
Okay. Thank you, Barbara, and thank you and your staff. Tell them thank you very much for all the hard work, it's appreciated by the board. Thank you. Under my report tonight, I wanted to mention that Nicole, Ray, Terry, and myself attended our governance training, which was at Montville High School this year, which was very, very welcomed, something up north and not having to travel down south for it. It was, I thought it was pretty well-attended and it was a very good training. Also, Terry and I attended, I believe Will was there too, for a leadership conference this past weekend. One of the board members in Montville have now become one of the school board members, one of the, on the school board, New Jersey school board, so I think that's going to help give us a little bit more trainings happening up in the northern part of the state, which I thought was very, very well-received. And I also wanted to announce that we're rescheduling our ethics training. Unfortunately, we did have inclement weather on the night that we were supposed to have the meeting on the 29th. And Kathy Hellowill will be here on February 26th, our regular meeting next week, and she will be doing our ethics workshop after our meeting, because she is coming from another place, so she'll be here probably around 8:30. I want to also announce, because I just got this a little while ago, that I heard from Councilman McGinnis today, that our new election poll place will be the Freedom Church. Came through from the Board of Elections. I want to thank Will for his hard work, and I would like to thank the mayor and council, and especially Mr. McGinnis for all that they put into this, because this is something that's been going on for a long time. And I'm sure the parents of the children at PK will be very happy to know that, but also the board is very happy that the mayor and council put forth the effort to help us get this done, and I want to thank Will for the time that he spent on it. It was well-done all around, so thank you. I don't know, that's all I have for my report. And we're moving on to public comment. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each speaker for a period of 30 minutes. Then, time permitting, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All members of the public speaking during public comment are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to give their full names, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during public comment. Would anyone like to speak? Come on forward.
Jim Foodie, Tukashakwa Trail North, Hewitt, New Jersey. I came here tonight after watching last month's meeting with regards to changing the conduct policy number, bylaw 164. And I was really surprised to hear the president and the attorney say that through training that she's received, that New Jersey School Board said that it's okay, you know, not to use Robert's Rules. I reached out and this letter that is a copy of an email that I got from the Director of Communications to New Jersey School Boards. And I'm just going to read the two highlighted areas. While New Jersey School Boards Association does not endorse the use of Robert's Rules by school boards per se, our field staff, our field services staff, through training and consultation, encourages boards to adopt either Robert's Rules or another parliamentary authority to govern the conduct of meetings. Additionally, New Jersey School Boards Association follows Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised current edition, in the conduct of its delegate assembly. What I want to point out to you guys, I mean, Robert's Rules is really important, and Linda, I don't think you, maybe you understand it as well as you should, no offense, I hope.
I'm sure, no offense is taken.
Robert's Rules, or any parliamentary authority, is here to do several things. One, protect the majority rule. It's also there to protect the minority in allowing them to speak. Creates an orderly meeting, it creates a set of rules, transparency, fairness. So I really don't understand why you wouldn't want to have Robert's Rules. And then, when you don't have Robert's Rules, when you turn to that word from shall to may, anybody here can say, all right, challenge you, and say, under what authority are you recognizing that person, calling the question, making the motions? It's really there to make these meetings run smoothly. And having a real good understanding makes it easy to have a meeting go smoothly. Not having it, people are going to, you know, they're going to jump up and speak whenever they want to, because Robert's Rules requires them to be noticed by you. But if you're not using Robert's Rules or some type of parliamentary authority, I wouldn't have to recognize you, I could speak whenever I want to speak, and that doesn't create a smooth and well-run meeting. So I really wish that you guys would keep Robert's Rules. It's there to protect the majority rule, it's there to protect the minority and allowing them, have them a voice. I've watched a few times where you've called the question and not had, everybody hasn't had a chance to speak. And it's important that they do get a chance to speak, even if they're not going to be on the winning side of an argument, but it's important that they're able to speak. By not having Robert's Rules, you don't need to make a second, Steve doesn't have to recognize anybody, Nicole can speak whenever she. Nicole can speak whenever she wants. She can speak over you. It's really critical that you guys have a parliamentary authority running the meeting. And if it's not Robert's Rules, it should be something else. But that leads me to another point. This policy manual was adopted on April 25th, 2012. Policy before that required, just as the Strauss Esme policy requires, that you have to have two readings, just like tonight you're going to have a second reading of a couple of policies and bylaw changes. That manual, when it was adopted in April of 2012, one reading. There weren't two readings. It was done at the reorg meeting. I really... That brings up another question is, what policy manual are you going... You're using the new one, but to me, it looks like you really should be using your old one. Now, there's a lot of similarities between Strauss Esme and what we had, but I think before you vote on any more policy changes, you get advice from your legal counsel as to which policy manual you're actually using.
Thank you.
All right?
Yes, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. Glenn Huber, West Milford resident, parent of Macapin student. First, I'd like to give some kudos for the Macapin vaping presentation that's going to be happening in a couple of days. That's a great idea, guys. I'm up here to speak about, same thing Mr. Foodie was speaking about. It's on the agenda. It's section 14, number 2, policy 164, actually by law 164. And in this bylaw, the first line reads, "Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised, shall govern the Board of Education in its deliberations and acts in all cases, et cetera, et cetera." The change on the agenda proposed is to change the word shall to may. Now, shall is a word that's used in drafting to mean that something's mandatory. When you change it to may, what you're doing is you're making it permissive, optional, optional to everybody at the meeting. Okay? I think Mr. Foodie pointed that out in a different way. But in doing that, it's going to make things very interesting. Now, the last time I spoke with regard to this, I completely agreed with Mr. Foodie. I've thought about it a little bit since then. Now, anybody who's been at the meetings or watched them in the last 13 months knows that our board president, Mrs. Van Dyke, has a preference for minimized discussion. A result of that is minimized transparency. And she also has a tendency to like to limit discussion, particularly discussion that she doesn't agree with. Under these circumstances, I would have to change my opinion and say that I'm in favor of this change because it will make her unable to limit discussion for those that need to say something. Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Seeing none, like to close public comments.
All those in favor? Any of those? Okay, we need a motion for the agenda.
Like to make a motion to adopt the agendas presented.
Second.
Discussion? We have... We're doing workshop and special act?
We have special act first.
First, okay. All righty. So budget and finance. Any questions under the adoption?
Just make a motion.
You did.
You already did.
Oh, you did?
Well, somebody did. For the agenda, for the agenda, yes?
Oh, yeah. The agenda as a whole, yes, you did.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm here. I took a New York minute, I'm sorry.
Budget and finance, Mr. Guarino.
A motion to accept 1 through 4 under budget and finance.
Second.
Discussion. Will?
For item 3, I just want to say thank you for keeping the field house replacement under budget. And that's my comment.
Any other discussion?
Did you have something, Mr. Fisher?
Any discussion? Question?
Just very briefly. I think Barbara worked very hard on trying to find a, an alternative to the field house that was... We had a lot of different bids, and there were a lot of different ways to do this, and she kept going back to the drawing board to find a good way to do it. And I think we came up with an outstanding choice that's going to work well for the district. It's not going to cost a fortune, and I... There was a lot of effort put into that, and I'd just like to say thank you.
You're welcome. And I'll pass that along to Chris Kelly because he worked really hard on this.
Any other discussion? I do want to say thank you, Barb, because I know it was... The bids that were coming back were just like crazy. So this is a great, great alternative, and same thing to Chris. Thank you for sticking, you know, for keeping at it so that we can get this accomplished. Roque?
Yes.
This is Romeo.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
This is Chris.
Yeah.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Oshinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes. Okay. Education. Mrs. Dwyer is not here. Mrs. O'Brien, would you do education for me?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve items 1 through 5 under education.
Second.
Any discussion? Questions? Mr. Drew? I look right at you now.
Thank you. Item number 1, I'd like... That took a lot of work by our people and by the bargaining unit, and I just want to...
No, no.
Oh.
No, that's...
Oh. What is that? That's right, I had a question. What is that?
This is an annual document we sign. The superintendent, the board president, the county superintendent of schools, the West Milford Police Department chief, and the county prosecutor. It's a agreement of cooperation, essentially. We communicate with the police department, the county prosecutor, they communicate with us and cooperate. So this is annually. It just came to us, probably in January.
I guess I haven't noticed it before. Thank you.
Any other...
Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Anawan, that's like the... I was going through the... Going through the computer today. That's a really thick pack of where you just... There's a discussion between like weaponry in schools and that kind of stuff. So there's that collaboration, so that there's an agreement between what they consider a crime or a misdemeanor or stuff like that, and so everybody's on the same page for, God forbid, when there's a need to be dealing with the police department.
Good.
Anyone else? Mrs. Francisco?
This is Chris.
Yeah.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mr. Oshinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
This is Romeo.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Item 6 will be gone after executive session.
Thank you. And now personnel, Mrs. Fritz.
I'd like to make a motion to move items 1 through 16 under personnel.
Second.
Discussion? I did want to mention items 1 through 5 are for retirements for our district, and it's a lot of years of service. I'd like to say thank you to the people that are leaving, for all their years of service and how much they're going to be missed. Karen DeAngelis, I think, is going to be a big vacancy for us, and I've known her for years, and I'd like to say thank you for all the time that she's put in, and it's much appreciated. Jean Reynolds, Diane Capello. I just want to say thank you. When I look at these lists, I see more and more people who were here when I first started that are leaving, and that's kind of sad, but I'm happy for them. I hope that... I wish them the best in the years ahead. Any other discussions? If not?
This is Chris. Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Oshinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
This is Romeo.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Policy, Mrs. O'Brien?
Like to move items 1 through 5 under policy.
Second.
Oh, wait a minute. Oh, there's no place to write down who's first to second. Okay, thank you. Oh, good. I'm not... I'm not having another New York minute here, okay. Any discussion?
Who was the staff?
I was...
I thought I was wrong.
Just a question on number 1 or committees. Should CASA be on there, or is it like a floating?
No. I think we decided that those are just liaisons, so...
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Will?
Resolution number 2. I'm sure you all remember how I feel about it. Please vote now. I think it'll be disruptive to the board.
Any other discussion? Mr. Drew?
Having been involved in at least a dozen organizations over the years where you have to have some kind of order to the meetings, I don't know of any organization or board that I've been involved in that hasn't used Robert's Rules. When I have mentioned it to other people, I think it's silly not to use Robert's Rules. It's a no-brainer. It's a way to conduct the meetings where everybody gets heard, everybody has a fair say, there's a particular order to which things are done. I think in a public forum like this, where all of the people were elected by some voters, we need to make sure that people have their opportunity to be heard, and I'm very concerned about what could happen if we're not using Robert's Rules. That's what we're saying. The may says that sometimes we won't. And, you know, I don't know why we would want to do that. I can't think of any good reason not to do that. I can say, however, that if we're not using Robert's Rules, or if it's, you know, optional, that I will certainly feel free to interrupt, speak whenever I feel like it, recognize the rulings of the chair or not. I just think it's absolutely silly not to have structure to the meeting. So I absolutely will vote against this, and I really implore other people on this board, we've been using Robert's Rules, and it's going perfectly fine. No reason to change it.
Any other? Mrs. Fritz?
In all honesty, I'm struggling with this one a little bit, and I've gone back and forth since the discussions come up because I think I understand why the may was presented initially based on the conduct of other meetings. Can you just reiterate why the...
Well, it wasn't that we weren't going to follow Robert's Rules, it's that we may follow Robert's Rules, and it has to do with different... My reasoning for it was for the discussion, that we were having... We were not really following Robert's Rules to begin with. Over the years, we didn't. The may changed... The shall changed to may, I mean, the may changed to shall in 2012. It was may before that, and the meetings always followed underneath that. It flipped. It flipped then. And I feel that our meetings have been running in a more unofficial manner, and that's how we've been following them, and that's the reason for me, for may. Not that I wanted to do away with any rules. If there's another set of rules that need to be formulated, we can, but the may does not mean that we're not going to follow Robert's Rules. It just meant in certain instances, when we got to a point where we have a deadlock or whatever, that we could move on with a different type of discussion. That was my reasoning. Now, everybody has a right, you know, look, there's nine of us on the board, so everybody has a vote, and they should vote the way that they feel is best for them. Yes, Ray?
So may give us the opportunity to have additional discussion?
I think it opens the discussion. I think it does. It doesn't stop where you say, okay, only, you know, you're not able to talk. I think we've kind of let the discussions happen because I think that's what the public wants to see. They want to see the transparency like we have been sharing. I mean, our last meeting probably was a very good example, when we were talking about different things going back and forth, and I think that's what I was looking for. So that, as president, that's what I was looking for. But this is a nine-member board, and everybody has a right to their... Not going to live or die on any one little motion, so it's up to each of you. Any other discussion?
Yeah. Rules or laws really can't be optional at times. Like when I pull up to the stop sign, I can't say, well, I don't think I'll stop this time. There's a reason for it. There's a reason for the order of having them there. So that's why I think having it more concrete in a term of shall is appropriate.
I just wanted to say, may or shall, I know that being a new board member, there's a lot I don't know about the past, but I think whatever's voted on, that together we can all work together and have really good meetings and make really good decisions for our schools, which is what we're all here to do. And as I stated in the last meeting, I did look into the Strauss Esme, and that is why I'll be, you know, voting for what Strauss recommended, so...
Anyone else? Mrs. Francisco?
Mr. Drew?
Yes to 1 through 5, but no on 2.
This is Romeo.
Yes for 1, 3, 4, and 5, and no on 2.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Oshinsky?
No to 2 and yes to the remainder.
Mrs. Fritz?
No to 2 and yes to the remainder.
Mrs. O'Brien?
No to 2, yes to the remainder.
Mr. Seidowitz?
No to 2, yes to the remainder.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes. Now, we'll move on to the workshop portion of the meeting, right? Budget and finance, Mr. Guarino.
This is just discussion, maybe it's a vote?
This is just discussion?
Mm-hmm.
I was just responding to you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
It is just discussion. Anybody have any discussion?
Items 1 through 10.
Any questions? Mr. Drew?
I didn't even worry.
I don't want to forget you.
You raised your hand.
It looked like it was going up.
Thank you.
No discussion? Okay, we'll move on to education. Do you want to comment about Stephanie?
Oh, we'll do it this week.
Okay. Anyone have any questions under education? Mr. Drew?
If you don't mind, I would like to make a comment. I think this is absolutely outstanding. Ms. Primavera was recognized for what's clearly an outstanding job, and it's just, you know, we have so many good educators in our district, and I am really pleased about that, and there is any way we could actually recognize the job that people like Ms. Primavera do.
She's going to be here next Tuesday to get into work, but we have something for her, so I'll probably say that for that.
Great. I mean, that's just absolutely outstanding. Educator after educator is doing a great job for us.
She's wonderful, and we have a lot... We have a wonderful staff. We really do. Personnel, Mrs. Fritz? Any questions? Okay, now, negotiation.
Are we going to have a board of negotiations?
We will have a discussion. We're going in the memoriam room and bringing in... We're already in the memorum, we're in the agreement close session.
Okay.
And also the S U B drivers.
And then are we voting on that today or next week?
Next week.
Okay, thank you.
Old business. Anyone have anything for old business?
Seeing none, like to close old business.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
New business. Will.
I did have a question regarding the Macapin gym floor. That wasn't in view of the long-range facility plan documents. I have one from 2017, one from 2018, and the long-range facilities plan. I was just wondering, one, why it wasn't there, and the second thing is, how much is that expected to cost, or how much are we budgeting for, rather? I'm still thumbing through, I still have, you know, about 100 pages to go. So if you don't have the answer now, that's fine, I just...
No, it's not a problem. We have... Let's see, but that doesn't really...
Is there any other?
Typically, I thought that was...
But she found it.
Twenty-eight dollars is put in for the research.
One twenty-eight? What section is that? Second section.
It's under...
I thought I did see it.
Capital outlet.
It's not bad.
Under the, under Macapin, right?
Yeah.
Because it's, I don't see it in operations typically.
No, it would be under, there's not a separate plan for, yeah, I don't use that.
Oh, you have a special.
I use something different.
Okay.
It would be...
She has it committed to memory.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Nina.
That's what I saw.
Yeah, I guess I should have kept numbers, not those.
Is there one for athletics?
Yeah, there is a tab for athletics.
Yeah, I think that's where it is. I think that's where I saw it.
There's one for athletics that would be on the...
Is it on the high, under the high school?
Can you make the books smaller?
If you make the print smaller, I would be big trouble.
Yeah, I couldn't read. I can't read it now.
While Barbara's looking, is there any other discussion under new business, under the budget? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, answering Will's question, the reason why it wasn't part of the capital project, we never did anything about it because of the leak in the roof, because it had been changed a couple of times, and we had the problem that that had been stolen a few times. So, Mr. Trent Casa, we're having a problem with the floor, it's a rubberized floor.
Well, the township had the same thing at the P A L building.
So, we're going to have to replace the floor one way or the other, because it's becoming slippery, the surface, because as it wears, and it just makes sense to have a wood floor again, because we don't have a problem with the roof, because then you have another regulation-sized gym that you can use for sports. So, that's why I included it in the budget, Mr. Trent Casa talked about it. But, once again, it's the board's decision on what they want to see and what they don't.
Well, there's a problem with the floor, correct?
Yeah, it's going to need to be replaced, either with another rubber surface, or you put a wood floor back in.
Since the roof is not leaking anymore, we figure we could put hardwood in, as opposed to another rubber floor.
And is it because it's rubber, we can't use it for other sports, we thought?
It's too smooth.
Right, in fact, I mean, there are a lot of limitations.
It's good P E gym down, because it's for athletic stuff.
Did you have a question, Ray?
What year was the rubber floor initially coming in?
It was a while ago.
Yeah.
A long while ago.
Before May.
It had to, it was put in, if I remember, was because of the leak.
Right.
Because something happened to the wood floor, and...
Yeah, so I've been here almost nine years.
It was even before, I think it was, I think it was like, probably in the two, maybe like 2000 years.
It was done before our kids went to Macapin.
Yeah.
Our kids were in Macapin.
No, it wasn't when my children were there.
No.
No, the wood floor was still there. Maybe 15 years ago, maybe. Because it did leak, you're right, Dan, it came through the doors from something.
Yeah, because my kids were there.
That caused it. Will.
The reason why I bring up something like that is, you know, I don't disagree with the need, but coming up those stairs along the side of the building here, and that was listed in this capital project projection at 75 grand, is tugging at my heartstrings that there are possibly other things that could be worked on in the meantime. And I know that's not ultimately, you know, my decision to pick and choose those items, but, you know, just something to consider.
I know that, you told him about the stairs right out there in West Oak School?
Right.
What I have in this year's budget, prior year's budget for repair, and...
There are other amazing projects, for sure.
We have, because we need to repair the ones behind Macapin School also.
Did you say you wanted them to be repaired here?
They need, yeah, they need, we started...
I just came up with them.
You kind of have to pick and choose projects, in my understanding.
I know about that.
Right.
But some...
You can get back to it.
The stairs outside, we would repair them, our maintenance people would do the repairs on them, because you're not going to be taking them out and replacing them. So that would be a maintenance...
It's not part of the long-range...
It wouldn't be part, it wouldn't be a capital outlay, because we're not having another company coming to do it.
Okay.
And I'm still looking forward to the gym floor right there, but I'm looking for a different set of...
Any other questions under the budget? Mr. Drew.
Quickly, I have not, I have started going through, but I certainly have not been through it at all, so I'm not going to comment on it until I've done that. I'm not going to take everybody's time tonight. Are we actually voting on the preliminary budget at the next meeting, or we're just discussing?
No, we're just...
Okay, so we've got...
We unfortunately have bad weather the night that we were going to do this, as maybe a hole, so we put it on the agenda, so that if you have some questions, that we could start the dialogue.
Yeah.
And now, at the next meeting, you know, we have the ethics presentation, but if the board wants to schedule another meeting to have discussion about the budget, that's...
Well, the 12th...
Well, she has that.
March 12th is our budget meeting.
Is the preliminary budget. So that's a meeting that Dr. Adamo will do a presentation, he'll have a lot of time to discuss it, and then whatever is approved on the 12th has to go to the county, and you still have another six weeks...
Yes, just for preliminary.
... adjustments to whatever the preliminary budget is.
But the March 12th is the budget meeting.
Yes, for the preliminary budget.
Right, right. Nothing else?
No.
Any, Will?
In terms of future projects, I know that the P A system and the telephone systems have to be replaced, and in my understanding, that's going to be a big ticket item. I was just wondering what kind of steps are being taken in order to fund that.
Well, now that we have a new advisor for pathology, please, Rob Winston is over there in the corner.
Oh, hello.
Hello.
I was wondering who that was.
Yeah, so was I.
Who is that screen man?
Stand up.
So it's not B bars.
Yeah, B bar two.
No, you're just, you're just Miss Will.
Welcome.
Welcome. Rob comes to us with a lot of experience, and we're looking forward to him familiarizing himself with what we have and what we need. And I do believe that he's going to set up a meeting with the tech committee once he feels comfortable with recommendations. So, we're looking at, I think, the 2021 budget, right? Or any kind of telephone changes.
Well, I'll be prepared to, I'm starting discussions now, I'm doing an investigation as to what our options are, just so we can get an idea of where the price points are depending upon the technology, and then we can let that guide us as far as delivery, because it all depends upon where it fits into your budget. But I'll have the information for you sooner than later.
I'll get that one.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I didn't see any added staff in the budget. Is it possible to look, to add staff, what the cost would be discussion-wise for full-time social workers in the elementary school? Is that like something that we could look at, what it would cost?
To add three more?
To have each school...
Well, we have three, and for each elementary school to have their own counselor?
It would be a step-one position.
Okay.
A one?
So added three step-one positions is really kind of my answer.
It would be around $175,000 plus benefits.
All total, $250,000?
With benefits? Depending on the type of school.
Right.
And they're under 26, and they're still with mom and dad, or...
Right, right.
Whether they're 27...
Thank you, I didn't expect an answer that quickly, but, thank you.
Any other questions regarding the budget? Regarding anything else under new business?
Seeing none, like to close new business.
When I find out where it is all...
I need a second.
Thank you.
It was $128,000.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, moving on to our second part of public comment. Do I need to make the motion? Moving on to public comment number two. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each speaker for a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during public comment. Anyone wishing to speak under public comment, come on up.
One more time, Jim Foodie, Hewitt. I guess first I'd like to say I commend the board for the decision they made regarding Robert's rules. I think it was truly the right decision to make, so I'm glad to see that it was made, and you guys can move forward and keep things going smoothly. Regarding the budget, having a $2.5 million surplus is a beautiful thing. Would have been, would have been $3 million if we hadn't moved, or you guys hadn't moved $500,000 into capital reserve, it would have been a $3 million surplus. And I, alls I can remember is, when we did that, approved that budget, alls we got was gloom and doom, that we're, our surpluses were going to be going down, 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 and they did the opposite, and they went up, 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 and up with a 0% increase. So I just, I need to point that out. I don't know if the board's aware, if they look at the bill list like they should, but as everybody on the board knows, some of them campaigned with it, that I had ethics charges filed against me by the president of the Bus Drivers Association. That cost the district to the tune of $25,417, not including what the attorney at the time, Mr. Roselli, had, what he had spent. I would gather, I would gather he probably spent another five to six hours, so it's probably closer to 26,500, maybe 27,000. That was done for the way I voted. N J E paid for it. I think it was a waste of their money, as well as a waste of the district's money, just because of the way I voted. And both the commission and the judge in that case dismissed the charges based that there was no factual evidence as to what they had put forward to the commission. I found something I was looking for last week, and I don't know if I was surprised, something I probably read before, but 18A 17-28. And that is called Duties of the Business Manager. And there is A, B, C, D, E, and F. And E, which I wish I would have known about when I was sitting on this board, states, and this is under statute, "Report monthly to the board as to the progress of any work of construction or repair in the district." So I think that you guys, I don't know if even Barbara was aware of that. But I, you know, we're spending money on a lot of projects, from the roof at Maple Road, to the greenhouse at the high school, to middle school, the bleacher repair, the field house, and you guys should probably all have a report done to this board, and that's not something I don't believe, and Mrs. Butler can inform the board of that, but I don't think that falls under the purview of being done in executive session. I'm pretty sure that has to be done out in the open. And it would be well-served to have that done in public, because it lets the citizens of the township know where their money's being spent on, and they can get an idea. And again, if anybody wants that, it was 18A 17-28. I think that would serve the board well, it would serve the township well, and hopefully that we can see that occur. And lastly, I would hope that the board members would try to find out what policy manual you're using. Investigate the minutes. If you have a new policy manual adopted at one sitting, our bylaws, previous and current, say that those changes can only be made at the first reading, then the public gets to read it on the website, and the second reading. So I would encourage the board to look into that. Thank you.
Glenn Huber again, West Brom resident, Acapulco parent. I didn't plan on getting up and speaking again. But first, as a former policy committee chair, my suggestion on the policy issue, if it was never read twice, simply put it on the agenda and ratify it. Read it twice again and ratify it.
Were you the chairman in 2012?
In 2012?
No.
Well, because that's when he said it was...
No, 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 as a policy chairman, I'm just making, as a former policy chairman, I'm just making a suggestion on how you can deal with it in the most easy way to resolve it. If it never got done properly...
gets to read it on the website, and the second reading. So, I would encourage the board to look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Huber again, West Milford resident, active parent. I didn't plan on getting up and speaking again. But first, as a former policy committee chair, my suggestion on the policy issue, if it was never read twice, simply put it on the agenda and ratify it. Read it twice again and ratify it.
Were you the chairman in 2012?
In 2012, no.
Because that's when he said it was.
No, no, no. As a policy chairman, I'm just making, as a former policy chairman, I'm just making a suggestion on how you can deal with it in the most easy way to resolve it. If it never got done properly, you can fix that by simply ratifying it and putting it on for two readings and being done with it. We, I know that Dr. Anamon and the policy committee did a lot of work to get them up to date after Mr. Ashika left. And it was a ton of work. They're now compliant, and to go back and go to a previous set of policies is kind of silly. All right, so that having been said, being that we're in budget season, I'd like to encourage all of you to go back and take a look and fully understand the reductions in state aid that are coming. I don't remember the exact number, but I think it was somewhere around $7 million per year over a period of time we're going to be losing. And because of those reductions, they're permanent, I don't think simply raising taxes is going to do the trick. So, I do not envy you the difficult decisions you have ahead of you, but the district needs a long-term plan to deal with these things while keeping academics and student opportunity and increasing it at the same time as protecting the taxpayers. It can be done, but you may have to make some decisions that are difficult and unpopular. I wish you luck.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, motion to close public comment.
Seeing none, I make a motion to close.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We need a motion for executive session. At 9 o'clock, I make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel, resignations, litigation matters, special education matters, negotiations, HIBs, and a matter of attorney-client privilege. Can I just include? Oh, I, I'd like to move to add something to that description. I'm sorry. No, that's okay. No, because it just came to my attention. Including professional services and other contract negotiations, and then go through with HIBs. Go ahead. Okay. Oh, so pick up from HIBs. Okay, thank you. HIBs and matters of attorney-client privilege, the executive session minutes will now, will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. All right.
So, we will be returning to take action, for action under the HIBs.
Thank you.
Here.
Mr. Sidewitz.
Here.
Mr. Drew.
Here.
Mr. Greeno.
Here.
Mrs. Fritz.
Yeah.
Mr. Ochsinski.
Yeah.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyk.
Here.
Okay, Mrs. O'Brien, would you take that motion?
Sure. The recommendation of the superintendent to approve the following resolution, whereas in accordance with the requirements set forth in P L 210, Chapter 122, the West Milford Board of Education has received results of HIB investigation reports on February 19, 2019. Therefore, be it resolved that the West Milford Board of Education approves issuance of written decisions affirming the superintendent's decision in the following HIB investigations. 2019 E 5 unsubstantiated, 2019 H 9 substantiated, 2019 E 6 substantiated.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mrs. Francisco? Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Mr. Ochsinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Sidewitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyk?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night.
Good night. Be safe, Barbara. The ice the other day just glazed over.
We need something. I said, no, yes.
No, I know.
We need your bed and sleep. Petri dishes are.